It is March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and this is the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees March meeting. I'm Sarah Diddy, I'm your Real Property Section Manager, and we will get going with Welcome and a Roll Call. And so members include Wes, Jerome,
Here.
Mark, here.
Here.
Kay, Alex, and Louis. I think I heard Alex online. Okay, we have four, and I think we have at least one more to join us. And so our first consensus item is our P. Tendikenda.
Do we have enough quorum? Can we approve the minutes?
We do.
Okay. I hope everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. Move for a motion to approve the minutes. Thank you, Marvin. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jerome, thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, Staff Administrative Activity Report. Do you want to go through that?
Absolutely, be glad to. And one of the key things we continue to do since our last meeting in January was to begin to make progress on some of the directives and some of the challenges that we've identified as staff. And so in late January, our staff was actually contacted by Sedgwick County Treasurer's staff asking us if we would want to meet and discuss the tax foreclosure or property tax foreclosure sale process again. And so that meeting was attended by Gary, Sally Staying, Logan Bradshaw, and myself, along with Steph from Sedgwick County, and then Jeff Anzand representing us from our Law Department. And in that conversation, I was saying we were able to come to some clearer understandings of some of the needs and challenges surrounding our desire to acquire property, the tax sale process, but we did not make headway as far as our ability to acquire property through the tax foreclosure process. And at that point in time, staff were, Sedgwick County staff were receptive to the idea of credit bid or potential process changes. And so we did discuss some of the, when there is a nuisance or demolition or things, those are abated and then that money is attached to the property tax rolls. There was some discussion of whether to maybe pursue having that paid back over the course of years instead of being attached to the property tax rolls all at one time. That's outside of the jurisdiction of the land bank, and so not necessarily something that we can proceed on. And basically, our takeaway at this point is if in the immediate future we want to acquire property through the tax foreclosure process, we probably will need to come up with amounts that we're willing to spend in the foreclosure auction. And I think it was good to have this conversation and to resume that opportunity and pursue the opportunity. And again, sharing on that, Gary was there as well, invite any additional comments or feedback.
My biggest question, sir, is why can we not take and spread the cost of demolition over a period of years?
That would probably be an M A B C D consideration more than a land bank. It might be something that could be pursued, but it's really outside of the jurisdiction of the land bank.
I think we have to pursue. It's ridiculous not to. I mean, if you come in and prepare my sidewalk in front of my house, you spread that over a period of time. If you come in and demolish my property and it goes to a tax sale the next day, that's wiped out. And the city gets zero money. I don't have to pay it, and whoever buys the property doesn't pay. That seems...
Also, they also overpay. They also overpay for tearing them down.
Oh, definitely.
Sometimes they're twenty thousand when they should only cost ten. So I'm not sure who's getting the contract.
We can argue that all day long, but my point is...
On your point, because we like, we pay for CDBG pays for a lot of those. Those come through our approval boxes in our department. Some of the ones that have increased costs is we, they have to go in and abate the asbestos, so it's not to be able to contain it as well as lead-based paint so as not to further harm the environment. So some of the ones that are really, really high are related to that. Whereas if they don't have to do the sewer seal or the asbestos or the lead abatement prior to demo, those, that can lower the cost. So that's one thing when we're looking at them. But yeah, they're coming in right now about, you know, anywhere from fourteen to twenty thousand dollars for the demos.
Who's currently doing the demo? Do we know?
They use a variety of different contractors for those, and we see the ones that are, they do demo some properties without CDBG funds as well, so we're not seeing those. But it's various different contractors. I think it also has to do with availability. Once we get the environmental clearance to take it down, who can go in and do it the quickest? But we could get some more information on that from a M A B C D. I agree. I think pursuing the, spreading those out over a period of time could help. I think that was one of the things that we took from the meeting that we would be able to re-change our process a little.
So on the demo, though, wouldn't that, wouldn't that, though, pass on to the new people and they just have to keep paying it for specials for the rest of the time they have it then?
Yes.
So they're going to spread it out over a fifteen-year, twenty-period at eight hundred dollars a deal for the next...
That'd be something to...
I just don't know legally if you can abate, you can attach that to the deal for the property. I wonder if that's a legal question, because I don't know. You can attach that. I don't know. I mean, I know the sidewalk, but that's more of a public thing. But if it's a housing thing, I don't know if you could have someone else pay for it without a, I don't know what the legality is on tearing it down and assessing it.
I think it's gone, it's debated. I think we need to check in.
Yeah, yeah.
See if that's an opportunity. Because if not, then...
Yeah, I know what you're saying. They're out the money, they're in their house.
I don't know why the city would tear it down. I mean, if I want to spend fifteen, twenty thousand dollars tearing down a property, I know I'm never getting the money back. What's the benefit there?
I think a lot of it is remediating immediate hazards in the area.
Makes me even mad, John.
Other staff, key staff actions is our, we have said, joined more workshop for the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees and the Affordable Housing Fund Review Board, or the Affordable Housing Review Board in January. And one of the things that we realized as we put those presentations together is we had a whole lot of content there. And so something I would be very open to is as there are a desire for follow-up with any particular either person or department, we would be glad to try to reach out and allow time for follow-up questions in the coming months as well. And, you know, demo properties. On February first, we, well, we had received outreach in January about a fire-damaged property in the Plainview neighborhood. The owner is interested in donating that property to the land bank, and so we'll have more presentation on that and just where we are in that potential donation opportunity here in a little bit. One of the opportunities we have is through associations that we've become affiliated with is continuing education opportunities. And so Lance had attended a reevaluating code enforcement webinar training. And so we're trying to stay current, not only on what we're doing immediately here, but also other trends within community development, community preservation spaces. And then we also, again, another agenda item we'll present more in full in a little bit is that we have been discussing a proposed multi-family donation. We have made some headway with our law department on what the next steps for that project look like. And so we had a fairly unique meeting opportunity a few weeks ago to try to move that project forward. So that as our staff report, and be glad to ask you any questions.
Well, I understand a lot of three, the donated property, the taxes are two years and delinquent, and they want the city to tear it down. Is that what you're, they're saying?
Actually, the status on that one, I believe the taxes are two years delinquent. It had, we had received an offer of the property as a donation, and when Lance went out to look at it on-site, he realized it had had a fire and was placarded for demolition. One of our questions as we vetted it is it is in Plainview. We know that that area has high concentrations of lead-based paint and other things that would require remediation. So part of our vetting was if we acquire this structure, would we be looking at demo or at rehabilitation as a more cost-efficient option for that lot? At that point, we found that it was already carved through the code enforcement process, and it will be demoed through M A B C D. If it hasn't already, it will be in the coming days. And so at this point in time, that consideration would be for a vacant lot. It would have back taxes and it would have a demolition assessment against it. One of the opportunities through the land bank is that we can also abate that. And the beauty of us being the ones to abate that cost is that we ensure that it's developed and we ensure that it is back on the tax rolls in productive use.
Thank you. You know what the property taxes are on that?
I don't have that right in front of me. Actually, as I'm looking at my sheets, I have a note that the taxes are six thirty-four fifty-seven. I don't know if that's in total or if that's per year. If Lance can hear me and take a moment to chime in to see if he has any additional information.
I'm going to the assessor's website now to confirm the number.
Sorry, this is Jeff Anzand. I just want to point out that under Kansas law, if there's been a fire or something of this nature, there's a fifteen percent of the insured amount withheld and given to the city to cover any potential lien. So we want to make sure if that's been the case, that we look into the possibility of getting that money to cover the cost of some of this.
I believe there was no insurance.
Okay.
But thank you. That's a good point to note. And I guess just one additional thing I would add in this staff report. You might notice that our meeting packet looks a little bit different. One of the things that we are trying to do, even as we talk about slowing down, is really increasing the professionalism of what we're delivering to you as a board and also increasing our readiness for things to move forward to council. And so it's our goal, instead of providing updates every step of the way as we evaluate properties, to really bring things out of a place where we can produce a good informational packet for the board's review. And then when action items come to the board, that packet really is essentially the information that we'll work to council as well. And so I do invite board's feedback on that, but we're trying to take steps toward increasing our professionalism and how we bring things to you.
Sarah.
I think I heard an audio there.
Sarah, this is Lance. I wanted to confirm that that number you had is correct. It's for both the twenty-two and twenty-three years add up to that dollar amount you had.
Thank you. So really, we'd be looking at about half of that annually, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm glad to share. We can either jump forward to that particular item now or we can come back to it for additional presentation and questions as well, whatever the board's preference would be. I think with that, we would be ready for an approval of the Staff Administrative Activity Report.
I saw a move. We approved the Staff Administrative Activity. Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Okay, our next item of business is election of officers. As I've been reviewing the bylaws in preparation for this meeting, I realized we actually should by bylaw be electing officers at the first meeting of each calendar year. And so I missed that in our January meeting, but wanted to bring it to the board for this meeting. Elections included chairperson and a vice-chairperson. The chairperson presides the meetings of the board and takes official actions on behalf of the board. And the vice-chairperson would perform those duties in the absence of the chairperson. And the third officer is not necessarily elected. It is a staff appointment, and that's really your treasurer in terms of bringing financial reports and other administrative activities.
I thought you were saying...
You ought to be my friend. No.
Do we have a nomination for Gary, for president, for chair? Don't move.
I moved too. Who wants to be vice-chair? Hey, Jerome.
I'm on the K.
I'll second Jerome's nomination. Wait, which part? Are you seconding?
You seconded Mars' recommendation.
Yes, yes.
It's too late. She already seconded that. You take it back.
I think that would be awesome.
I would propose we have a slate. I'll be chairperson, Jerome will be vice-chair. Do we have a second of that? Second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, that's done.
Okay, thank you all. And I will continue to look forward to working with both of you and all of you. Okay, getting into deeper conversation. I wanted to provide an update on Nathan Ash. We do have that still out being marketed. We have had a tremendous amount of interest from different developers. I think developers are also very busy right in this season. And we have seen a couple of potential proposals come through. And as we receive things, staff is trying to review, make sure that anyone issuing a proposal understands what it is that we're looking for and our requirements for affordable housing outcomes or other eligible outcomes based on our funding source. So at this point in time, we have not yet received an application that stops our clock as far as the plan is that once we receive our first valid application, we would provide a thirty-day notice to all developers within our notification circles and allow them that thirty days to finish up any proposals they may be working on. And then staff will vet proposals for completeness, accuracy, things like that, and bring all proposals forward to the board. So at this point in time, we don't have one that stops the clock yet, but we have received a couple of submissions and we have received quite a bit of interest. And so I'm excited for what could be in the future with those. And we also have a couple of potential acquisitions to share with you. And the first one is the property that we referenced in the staff report in Plainview, and it's thirty-nine eighty-one East Whitney Lane. And so in January twenty-eight twenty-four, this was offered to the Wichita Land Bank as a potential donation. As currently stands, it is a duplex property. As staff did research, we discovered there was fire damage to it, and it had been condemned and was scheduled for demolition. At this point in time, I don't have a moment by moment, but demo is expected within the next month or less. One of the advantages that the potential donor is seeing is that we could be a potential vehicle to affect that donation, clear those back taxes and assessments, and then ensure that it moves on into a productive use or on behalf of the city of Wichita and other entities as well, as well as for the neighborhood. Our presumptive use would be for affordable housing development. And so as we looked at the options with this parcel, we know that the Wichita Land Bank is funded with community development cooperative funds. And as we've discussed here many times, any projects must be eligible uses for those funds. And so our preliminary review we're cited indicates that this parcel could be used for potentially single-family housing development. If we get into multi, even replacing duplex for duplex, there are some additional environmental things that we would want to vet. But our preliminary analysis, it looks like it could be redeveloped as a home. It does align with the following Wichita Land Bank goals, including neighborhood revitalization, returning the property to productive and tax-paying status, and potentially some provision of financial resources for the land bank. Although with CDBG funds, any properties that do provide resource, it goes back as CDBG program income. So it does not provide unallocated or general fund resources. And we assume that the property would be deeded at approximately twenty-one dollars to report the deed. At the time that something is deeded, the Wichita Land Bank would assume mowing and maintenance costs for that lot. And it does look like we would be able to use this as a CDBG eligible property. And at this point in time, we're not actually presenting this to the board today for a vote, but we wanted to let you know what's in progress and that we hope that this one could come to the board, hopefully as soon as next month. And so between now and then, we would have the law department review it. And so a couple other just updates is that we have been talking with potential developers, people and entities that we work with on a regular basis in our department to determine what level of interest, because that's one of our obligations to the board. Generally, the land bank's focus area has been a section of northeast Wichita, and that's where we really focus our efforts. And that's also where there are scales of economy involved. And so there is really this reaction to the potential of this parcel in Plainview. Some developers are very interested. Some have said they would not be interested at this time. Some are still assessing, and so that's part of why we're not bringing it for a vote today. Additionally, we are outside of our primary focus areas in terms of our specific focus area and the established central area. And so something before we would officially bring it for a vote is that we would be interested in the board's opinion on whether working towards some scales of economy in the Plainview area would be a board's desire. It could be that depending on how marketable the parcel was with the house, in the end, it may not be feasible for developers yet, but it might be feasible if there were other opportunities in the same area. And so it could be a short-term banking of properties for future uses when there is more of a scale of economy there. And so with that, our recommendation today would be to receive staff reports and updates regarding a potential Wichita Land Bank acquisition opportunity at thirty-nine eighty-one East Whitney Lane. And with that, I'd be glad to stand for any questions.
What the developer you talked to?
And we have a list of developers that we regularly work with for our home, housing development loan program opportunities. They include Habitat for Humanity, Men and I Housing, Hope Builds Community, Jacob's Ladder. We have a couple others, Howard T. C. Residential Housing. We have not talked with that whole list yet, but actually, as we've had other meetings with other developers who would like to come into the affordable housing space, we have been bringing out potential opportunities to those as well.
They see development in an area like this. And make it worth their while. What's the, what's the ask on their part to do something?
At this point in time, one of our primary developers has indicated that it would not be feasible financially. I think if you could get a scale of economy, there might be more, but I don't know exactly at what point that would become. I know with two developers that we have either gone into contracts with or are working on contracts right now, four is really what they're pursuing. Once they pursue a fifth build in a contract or in an application, we actually get into different calls of environmental review, whereas that four allows them to really leverage those scales. And I know that the closer they can get those builds and those units, the more helpful it has been.
All the chairs, it's the big one. There's a whole bunch of houses that are duplexes or three-plex or four-plex. I don't, a single family, to me, wouldn't fit in this neighborhood. You couldn't sell it.
You'd have to look at it as you're going to do a Monks Day, try to get a couple other houses or try to get a whole, a whole...
Yeah, I mean, I think if anything, you get a lot, you just hold it, but I don't see that as a real benefit. I mean, you put a duplex on there, duplex you couldn't afford to...
Couldn't afford to do it.
Yeah, the rent, competitive rents in the neighborhood are half of what you'd have to charge for anything to build, so I... I find it very difficult to figure out what to do with a property like this.
I mean, the only thing you do with it is to, as you get tore down, it's just maintenance.
Would just be stuck with it. This is going to cost us more money.
So the point of irritation I have is the owner is more than happy to donate it because he doesn't want to mess with it.
Is it, was it owner occupied or was it an investor?
I believe it was an investor. I believe it was not occupied at the time of the fire, from the best of my understanding.
So there wasn't insurance on the property or insurance?
You've mentioned a couple times scalability. Are there other properties in that area that you all have identified as potential? Nothing at the moment yet, although when Lance did his drive-through, he indicated that there are a number of parcels and properties that have been placarded. And so that might be an opportunity if the board wanted to pursue some scales of economy in that area that staff could begin working to do outreach to those property owners and/or look at parcels on the tax sale that would come from Plainview, from the Plainview area. So those would be our likely strategies to try to build that scale of economy.
I think we're very lukewarm on the idea, let's staff continue to progress and make a red audition about it.
Lukewarm, I don't want it.
Yeah.
That's it. That's my decision. I don't think we should take it on, so pass. Oh, there's a, oh, there's a point. Oh, there's a point moving on to it at all. I think we just need to take it to the curb.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that for this discussion. You know, I don't know what this, you know, blight is something that you have to deal with. And we can't let things just... I mean, maybe you can't. I don't totally understand. But if it's, it's very irritating that somebody has it and then it costs. The cost is fifteen hundred dollars a year to just maintain it.
What's the demo cost of tearing it down, right? Because I'm sure the property has lead paint in it. It was built in the nineteen fifty's, so it's lead painted. So I'm sure it's going to cost, probably like she said, the abatement for the lead paint. It maybe have asbestos because it's that...
That society, yep.
So you're talking maybe fifteen to twenty and tearing it out.
It's, yeah, it's coming down whether we take it or not. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I guess if we get back to what is the Wichita Land Bank, there are some things that, what is our...
Our mission.
Our mission. What's our mission statement? And if things don't fit in that mission statement, then we don't even take it. If it has anything to do with it, we don't do a mission.
There we go.
It's our mission statement.
The primary responsibility and authority is to acquire, hold, manage, and convey property located within the established central area as well as other unutilized or distressed property within the city of Wichita in order to convert such properties to productive use.
I have a question. In conversations with the potential donor, do we ever ask the question, if not the land bank, what next?
Lance, would you be able to answer that?
Yes, he really has no plan B. He doesn't, this, he got this sole ownership of this property through a failed partnership. That's why it's been vacant for, it's been vacant for years and probably why he let the homeownership insurance lapse. But he doesn't have the financial capacity to do anything with it, including pay the taxes and fees that are assessed on it.
So it goes to a tax sale.
Eventually, but it's got set until.
Somebody's probably not gonna pick it up at a tax sale.
By the way, the city's probably gonna end up devastated.
Yes, so either way, the demolition assessment, and I don't have that number in front of me, but I believe it was in the twelve thousand dollar range. So either way, that demolition assessment will probably proceed forward. Ultimately, be whether forgiven by the land bank or forgiven through the tax sale process. That property will be returned and recycled back into the tax rolls somehow, whether it's through us or through the tax sale.
You're gonna end up with one way or the other.
Yep.
And it is a little bit outside of our scope, but that's why we wanted to go ahead and bring it to the board and really get.
I think it's outside of the established central area. Other than that, it fits into our mission.
Definitely is not in the area.
No.
But you have as well as under.
Underutilized and distressed property.
In the city of Wichita. In order to convert such properties to productive use, which it's not. And by lifetime. Unless the city wanted to buy a whole bunch of properties.
But like you're saying, there's a lot of properties down there that are getting to that point. I mean, this.
Temporary housing that was established is still there.
Yeah, fifty years later.
Speaking from the framework of another program that I manage, we have a home repair program as well. And one of the challenges that we've run into in Plainview is that it is very heavily renter occupied. And so often, the programs that we do have to assist with safe, quality, and affordable housing don't apply to that area. It would be an opportunity for the land bank to consider making some difference and some changes, but it would be a very long-term strategy. It would not be a quick strategy. And so given the parameters of how things are set up with the land bank, it may be a longer hold or a parcel than what the board is comfortable with.
The land bank doesn't take it, the city or the county ends up with it. If somebody doesn't buy it for a dollar.
The tax sale.
Tax sale, yeah.
I see what you're saying. I would anticipate this one would probably get purchased.
It's a tax.
Yeah, I think it would get purchased at the tax sale.
Part of our interest is in the parcel.
Yes, after, you know, the parcels that don't sell at the tax sale, can you talk a little bit about what happens with those?
I think they roll it into another sale. It just sits vacant until they re-post it.
But the county doesn't come into possession of that.
No, they, they don't buy anything. No, they just, it just sits there in limbo and they don't take possession of it at all.
The city maintains.
Yeah.
Through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
We would have to mow it. Yeah.
Right, at the moment is that we are hearing that land is probably the biggest struggle for nonprofit developers. Again, we have some that we haven't heard back definitively on their review and assessment of the parcel. But we are hearing that just being able to acquire property to do builds has become more challenging for some of our developers. In a lot of the areas that we really focus, we know that land prices are holding higher, which drives up acquisition and build costs. And so that was part of why we thought it could be at least an interesting thing to consider.
Land bank, what's our, what's our financial position? Do we have money?
We do. We currently have not yet touched our original allocation.
Is that, what do we have?
Oh, find it.
Three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars.
Okay, three seventy seven, four twenty seven. And basically, it operates on a reimbursement basis where once we have a project that is eligible, then we turn around and put the money back in. But for the moment, we actually have not yet gotten an end result that allows us to begin to obligate them to us.
We haven't drawn down the funds from the federal government yet. We would after. Pass.
As President, what would be nice is if in this community, there's some young man that would have a power that could maintain it, help some.
And we actually do lump it in with our M E contract through public housing. I don't know if I've seen this year's numbers. I think last year was thirty five to forty five per lot, per mo. And so it, we do lump it in on a contract to gain that efficiency.
Any program that, this is, this is the rabbit trail here. Is there any program that helps young people, especially like in this neighborhood, that their job could be to maintain, make a lot clean for one? Did the moody's get forty dollars a week or every two, every two weeks? If we twist on it, and I'd say, wow, I'll follow for that. This goes to a contractor that's a thousand that he does.
I don't think they have insurance. They have to have certain insurance for the city. They get injured on that job, the city could sue.
Well, I, I guess we've already, it was motion on the table, I believe, that we not acquire this property. We will stick with that motion. We'll reconsider that.
I'm thinking correctly, I think we have to let that motion play on through, and then if the motion did not pass, we could consider other motions.
There was a substitute motion.
Right.
Unless there was a substitute motion, we go on the substitute motion first.
Still in discussion. I mean, it's gonna end up somewhere. It's, it's in the process of getting tore down now, right?
I just don't think it's in our wheelhouse. I, I think it really is just. I mean, I understand the city's gonna get it back, but I just don't see this as a, we use for it even after it's torn down.
Well, if you say somebody will give a dollar on it and it will sell for a dollar, is the person that's offering a dollar, is that who we want to own it?
We don't know.
I give twenty thousand.
And the, the lot would likely sit there. You said there's two years delinquent taxes currently, so it'd actually have to sit for about three more years before it would come up in a tax sale. If there's two years currently delinquent.
Unfortunately, if you drive through there, this is not the only old house property over there. There's, there's many of them. This is, this is one of fifteen of them, so it's, it's.
I'd say we have a motion. It's already been approved.
Haven't voted on.
Oh, haven't voted on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
We have a motion?
I have a motion from Jerome, a second from Marge.
What do you get? What do you think, Kay?
I, I think I'm not ready to not, I'm not ready to say we don't want it because I'm curious about what else is over there. And, and you elevated a couple different times, the notion of scalability. If, if it's such that in the next six to eight months or six to twelve months, nothing over there that's boarded up could be equivalent or would become available, but if there's other stuff that's sitting over there that might make this a target rich place where you could get two or three or maybe four properties over the next three or four years, that makes sense to me.
Hey, Kay, you, you could try driving by there tonight. Go over there.
Drive by.
Seven X.
And do what?
Just, just go over there, take a look at, drive by, see the, see the places I'm telling you that are boarded up.
Well, what does the board up mean? I believe that.
That they're just abandoned.
Abandoned in that they're on the tax roll, abandoned in that.
They're like the title or they don't have any way of. The problem is, is the area doesn't support any value because the houses, quite honestly, are worthless. They're sitting on cinder blocks and they need to be, most of that neighborhood is temporary housing from the World War II, and it's just, it's the whole neighborhood. It's not, it's, it's the history of the, of the, of the Plainview. It's, it's just not, it's not this house.
My interest isn't so much in what's sitting on top of it, but that at some point, the value is the land.
The ownership is so fractured in that area that it'd be hard to accumulate.
The, the things that are.
So then that, yeah, that begs the question then, what's the city's plan for?
Yes, at one point, at one point, I don't know if Rock Schneider owned a lot of them. I don't know if he still does. I mean, he sold them.
He sold some on contract.
He's the one that, yeah, he's the one that had a bunch of them and he was printing them out. On section eight, had them on section eight for many years, so I don't know if he still does, but.
He has some.
So they seem to, they know a lot more about the environment and what's happening there. My, my only questions were, you know, if it's an opportunity to, at some point in the near future, collect three or four of those and start a turn. I think folks might have said very similar things about the communities in which there has been investment. And a decade later, we've seen lots of new homes in that space and property taxes are going up. And so I, I'd rather the city be on the front end of that wave than the back end. But I also understand what I don't know.
I think that's good discussion. Have a motion on the table. I propose that we go ahead and vote on that motion. And then if it does, if it passes, good. If it doesn't pass, have more discussion. So all in favor of Jerome's motion to pass on this property? Why don't we do it by hand signal? So all in favor of passing on the property, say aye, raise your hand.
That too. And Alex, would you state your? Okay.
Say.
He didn't raise his hand.
He did not.
He did not raise his hand, no. You did, I don't know. Yeah, Sam.
Raise your hand.
Say.
He also did not raise his hand on this one.
Alex, are you gonna vote?
You can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can't see him raise his hand.
Do you want to pass on the property or to have staff continue to review opportunities?
I'd like staff to continue to review.
Continue to review.
Okay, so Jerome's motion fails, a vote. So I will propose that we continue to review and have a report in our next meeting as to what potential there is on Whitney Lane and also in that general neighborhood. Do I have a second? Kay, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Okay. Move on.
Let me make sure I have the, the vote. Was that three to two?
Actually, four, four to one.
Okay, four to one. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will continue to review. We will try to get some more defined responses from developers that we work with and also continue to research what other opportunities in that area and try to bring out a more full report for consideration. Okay, so this one is one that has been underway for several months now, back in July of twenty twenty three. And we cannot share full details in public meeting. But key management had approached Housing and Community Services staff about a potential donation of a multi-family rental. And the address of that home is eight thirty three South Market Street. The property is known as Market Street Studios. The city could accept the donation, but the Wichita Land Bank also could be a vehicle to accept that donation. We could then rehabilitate the units and preserve twenty three apartments as affordable housing. The background of this project is fairly extensive. The former hotel property was converted into housing by a nonprofit known as South County Area Nonprofit Community Housing Organization, or S A N Show. The project originally came to council for home funding support, which is another program we operate in our department, on December thirtieth, nineteen ninety four. And as the project closed, three mortgages were issued due to S A N Show. And then those mortgages were issued on August third, nineteen ninety eight. And the mortgage amounts are a hundred and fifty two thousand and one hundred thousand. Two of those will mature as a sale or transfer, and a third mortgage for forty thousand matures in August of twenty twenty eight. As we researched, we found that land use restricted covenants related to an FDIC Affordable Housing Program from August of nineteen ninety five commit the property to being used as a project leased to low-income tenants. There are specific standards that go with that, including that at least forty percent of units are leased to tenants with incomes at or below sixty percent of area median income. And those restrictions were made in place on the property through August of twenty thirty five. And there is monitoring of that FDIC compliance, and that's through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. So our law department, especially Jeff, have done some pretty extensive research on what do we do? Because we found that S A N Show forfeited its nonprofit status approximately twenty two years ago and failed to file the corporate filings. And so based on law research, it appears that they didn't realize that the mortgages were technically assets that would be payable and due. And so at this point in time, there is no assignment of the mortgage's interest filed of record. And the city would not automatically be the assignee for that. And so the city would not automatically be able to forgive those notice mortgages. And so law found that K S, K S A seventeen sixty eight oh nine could give the district court jurisdiction to reassign S A N Show's interests to the city. This would require court action, and our law department is willing to file that. As part of their research, they also identified the last known registered agent for S A N Show. We were able to find her and contacted her, brought her in for a meeting along with key management representation to talk about what the process would look like to move forward with this and just discuss that proposed course of action. And so based on our preliminary analysis, it looks like eight thirty three Market Street would be eligible for CBG fund investment. We would be considering not removing the potential of acquired and holding by the land bank, but structural improvements and other updates to sustain the property. We did do an engineer's assessment and it's, for the age of the property, it's in good condition. There are some investments that would be needed. And so if the city becomes successful by assignment, the property could be acquired by either the city of Wichita or the Wichita Land Bank. And our, our staff leaning would be that the land bank could be a good vehicle for that. So depending on outcomes from that court action, sustained operations might either need to be completed through a property management agreement if the land bank were in sole possession or if it involved waiting until that final mortgage is released in August of twenty twenty eight, the land bank might have an operational agreement. There could be affordability restrictions in place. And so the next step is a court action to assume the mortgages. And so staff plans to bring that actually to council. Council would need to authorize that at our April second C council meeting. And then once that filing is made, those determinations would inform acquisition strategies. So we would come back to the board here with acquisition strategies based on what the court action turnout is. But our operating assumption is that we could acquire and convert the property through the land bank. And it would align with our guidelines governing acquisition of properties, including neighborhood revitalization and then loan for banking of properties for strategic uses. We do, at this time, still have our public housing, staff and maintenance support here. And so the lane or the, the housing department would have capacity to manage occupied units through a conversion process.
How many are occupied currently?
And I believe there's some blocks within. Generally, it's fairly heavily occupied, but there is transition.
Pretty much have them all occupied it. There's enough demand. She said that they cycle over. They could make the decision at some point to stop leasing units, but they're, they still are, they still need to keep them as full as possible.
And so typically, we would not recommend an occupied, single-family housing unit that we're trying to go through a traditional land bank process. But in this case, we would have management capacity while working through a, a process.
See that the, I'm looking online here, it looks like they pay all the utilities, trash, water, gas, and electricity.
And.
City would be responsible for paying all their utilities.
And that, the, the concept, and I'll share a little bit more, is that if we went through this process, we would be able to layer it potentially with project-based options, which would provide rent support that would sustain and actually better capitalize it than what it currently is.
This is section eight housing now at this point.
I think there is a base option there.
Through the, it's through the FDIC A H P is where the, the. Through the it's through the F D I C A H P is where the the subsidy is actually coming from. Currently, it's not a section eight project based uh, project currently, but Sarah's correct. There are some uh, tenants who have a voucher, like individual voucher assigned to them.
Okay, so I'm a little confused on the assumption of the mortgages or the assignment, I'm sorry, of the mortgages. Wouldn't they assign all three mortgages, the city, the transfer?
Yeah. And Jeff has been the one doing the research, so I'm gonna see if he can answer any questions.
To get assigned over to the city, I assume the city could cancel those mortgages at any time.
The two, yeah.
Yeah, that's it. They're still in the name of a defunct nonprofit organization. And in order to get that transfer, would have to have a court order. Once that occurs, then we can release those mortgages and they'd be free and clear. Except for the restrictive covenant by the F D I C.
Yeah, so the one mortgage that doesn't mature until twenty twenty eight is not an issue. You release that.
Right.
If it all gets assigned over, okay.
So at this point, we don't expect any cost for the court action to pursue assignment of the mortgages. Um, and if it's successful, then the board of the board of trustees could make recommendations regarding acquisition steps. Uh, um, key management is proposed at one hundred dollar purchase price. And so we would take it subject to existing loans and mortgages, but as the assignee, we would be able to forgive those. Um, also, current tenant rents would be prorated as at the time of closing. And so at that point in time, we would assume that income stream as well. So we expect that if we acquired it, um, engineering staff estimates came in around a hundred. So for safety, I'm gonna call it a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand in Wichita Land Bank Community Development Block Grant Funds. Um, would probably be put into the property to address some settling and then some aging catwalks of the property. This is actually a really good thing because we do have a timeliness consideration on our funds where eventually we need to spend them. And so if we can invest them in a project that starts them moving, which highlights to see. Um, at that point in time, once that has been done, um, the goal would be to sell the parcel to and or the property to an end user. That end user then applies to another program we have. Uh, it's called the Rental Rehabilitation Loan Program. Um, currently is really for a smaller scale, but we've been looking at doing some rewrites on that program. That program could provide low interest loan assistance um, for basically make ready types of unit updates, which would help support the voucher rents and help monetize the unit. And so we actually, as Sally has down the underwriting on the project, she feels that by the time that we would complete those updates and layer project based vouchers, it would actually be a very solid proposal for ensuring affordability and that the cash flow through the end of that affordability period. And so this potential donation course of action has been researched um, by the law department. Thank you, Jeff. And so our recommendation today is that the board receive the staff reports and our updates regarding the potential land bank acquisition at um, eight thirty three South Market Street. Um, our next step would be to take the proposal to council. Um, without, I'm glad to stand for any questions.
My only thing I'd like to see, you talked about Sally didn't cash flow analysis on this, saying that it would be a viable property once it's complete. That's not in the report, is it?
No, it's not. We could certainly add that.
I think it'd be important to add that. Then my other question or comment would be is the recommendation is I'm surprised because that really didn't tell me anything. Uh, the staff recommendation is to see staff reports and updates regarding potential acquisition. Well, it sounds like you're saying we ought to go ahead and acquire it.
Yes, not at this point in time. So I'm sorry for that being confusing. Um, part of what I've tried to do is begin to develop our materials using the council templates. Um, and in this case, this was really my is receive and file type of update.
Is that because you all aren't ready for us to make a a formal?
That is correct. Um, we had shared this with you for several months through the end of the year and wanted to provide an update with full details. But ultimately, this action will actually be the council's decision. Um, because in the end, it could be that the city or the land bank acquires, but the council needs to make the recommendation to pursue legal action.
They could take two to three months for the legal.
I think that was two to three months for legal.
Yes.
So we're we're slated to go at this point to city council on April second to bring that um, basically get their authorization to pursue court action. And then we, I guess we would anticipate having updates back for you uh, two to three months after that.
All the questions, council can ask what the land bank wants to do with it.
They could. Which is part of why we presented it to the board today and.
Don't think that I don't think the land bank or the council can make an informed decision on how to move forward until we get this mortgage situation figured out, which I think would be our response to them at that point.
I I I think, I guess the question is who's better, taking the city itself or us?
Land bank, to me, that's six and one half dozen of them. And the only nice thing is, I guess we have the funds we need. She just said that we need to. You have to understand exactly what's going on, and it would be good if you you would.
These funds, they'll lose it or use it kind of thing. If you don't use it, it's they're not there anymore, is that?
Hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars that was allocated to the land bank for C D B G regulations. We have six years to spend those. We can't be sitting on more than one and a half times our annual allocation in C D B G as a whole. This is for all of our projects. And so when we have a project that's been sitting there for multiple years that's not spending, it's kind of on us to maybe reallocate funds. So this would give us an opportunity to potentially spin funds out of the land bank's pot before we have to say, okay, we're not spending them here. Let's reallocate these funds to a different program.
That's why the we do it versus the city, so they don't have to.
Okay, I'm quicker to the land bank.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess. So it's a debt. I I'm a little confused. Is it debt? Is there any debt against it or is there?
There's there's three mortgages against it, but those mortgages are all in held by the not-for-profit organization. They originally owned it. And those mortgages would go away, they think, if the organization would donate that to the land bank or to the city. But they need to have legal action in order to do that because the not-for-profit is defunct. They they, okay, okay. So it sounds like that can all be removed. And I guess my only thought would be if I if I was taking this to the city, I would say that we recommend the city or the land bank acquire property subject to those mortgages. At least clear title, be able to see and a complete analysis of the financial.
That starts the whole process. Get it done and get it over before. Goes something else.
And you can just say that the staff and the land bank recommends acquisitions subject to blah, blah, blah. So at least they know, we've talked about it, it falls into our bailiwick, and we're ready to move forward if all those conditions are met.
Just put it under contract and have due diligence period, and then it'll work out, then cancel it.
Definitely like to keep this name Sedgwick County here nonprofit community housing.
This is a great.
Sancho, because I just wanna be Sancho. I I just like, I just like to say the word I work at Sancho.
And as we met with their last registered agent, we got some very interesting history of the project and the vision behind it. So it's it's been a very interesting journey to see what's possible and.
Yeah, I think it's a great, it fits right into our, I mean, of all the products we've looked at over the last two years. This is much worse than the first one.
Yeah. And so I don't know that we necessarily even need a motion. It was mostly a just a staff report and update, but expected to give helpful details after several months of research. Okay, um, we are due for presentation of our twenty twenty three annual report. Um, by ordinance, we need to present that to the council and then later than April fifteenth each year. And then we publish the report as well in the city's newspaper. And so the land bank was established in twenty twenty one. As we reviewed earlier, our primary responsibility is to acquire, hold, manage, and convey properties, um, especially those in the established central area, and then also other underutilized and distressed property timbered to productive use. And this came out of the twenty nineteen Wichita License for People Comprehensive Plan. And we give an update um, before April fifteenth each year that includes receipts and disbursements from our funds, um, all property transactions that have occurred, and then an inventory that will have to be moved. So one of the things in the our our report is fairly short in speech, but one of the things we want to do in both report to this board and proposal is review our actions and activities additionally. Um, and so staff reviewed quite a few different parcels over the course of twenty twenty three, including two parcels that were acquired on the Northwest Turner and Enth and Ash. We reviewed several city surplus properties, um, including one on the twelve hundred block of North River, which is several along thirteen street. None of these were acquired because of noise levels from nearby streets. And that was going to be a development potentially cost prohibitive for affordable housing initiatives. We also evaluated potential donations on South Hyrum and South Greenwood. Um, neither one was acquired because we did not feel that either one was going to yield eligible eligible outcomes. And so then we just reviewed a twenty three unit multifamily apartment complex, and that is still pending.
I meant on the one that Hoover did, uh, is that one still? Who owns that one? Was that was that a donation? Was that the city? Was that Kate out that had owned it?
I think that was a private potential donation.
Oh, private, okay.
And I think with both the north, or no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the wrong one. The North Hoover was a city owned um, surplus parcel. There was active development interest is over just off of two thirty five, and I think it was remnant property from a road project.
Right.
And so.
They could listen, you remember?
Um, I don't remember the acreage. I think we were looking at a potential of two duplexes. And but the noise anomalies was going to drive up the mitigation costs to the point that developers didn't feel it was feasible. So I think that was one of the first ones we looked at. Absolutely. Um, and so we also have discussed numerous times, um, when we gave this report to the council in twenty twenty two, we talked about key challenges, including funding sort of limitations and tax sale acquisitions. And then in January, we added a third challenge in the form of staff capacity limitations. Um, the same staff that manages this program and the housing development loan program is getting ready to ramp up the Affordable Housing Fund as well. And so staff capacity will likely be limited by that through the next year and a half or so. And so today, we're requesting consideration of suspending regular meetings through December thirty first of twenty twenty five, and that will be our next agenda item. Um, and under that, and so this this presentation has basically been pre-prepared for council. Um, and under this administrative activity would continue with meetings as appropriate to conduct business as we have action items. Um, for our running portion of our report, um, in twenty twenty one, the council allocated three hundred and seventy seven thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars in community development block grant funds for the pilot program. And those funds may be set across multiple budget years. Um, at this point, there have been no receipt through disbursements again in twenty twenty three. Um, we did for the sake of the land bank, we sent twelve hundred um, from the Community Development Block Grant COVID funding source um, for an engineering study at eight thirty three South Market. Um, because we felt like there was alignment with that funding source for potential initiatives around homelessness and housing insecurity driven by the pandemic. Um, but no, no expenditures out of land bank funds. Um, legal considerations, this report fulfills our duty to present an informal and unaudited annual report. And it will also be published in the official city newspaper. And so our recommendation today is to you can either receive and file or approve the twenty twenty three Wichita Land Bank annual reports. And the report itself is in packets and direct back to the agenda item fairly fairly simple things, but it reflects the key criteria that are outlined there.
So I so I understand the recommendation is to suspend these meetings as a reason for this.
That will actually be in our next agenda item, but yes, basically suspend regular board meetings and then.
On a, what kind of a, it's called?
Yeah, okay. Whether we need one, we we call it.
So our recommendation within that would be to plan on having basically an organizing meeting at the beginning of each year, a fall meeting at the midpoint, and then others on a as needed basis as there's business items to pursue.
So basically, if something comes up where somebody wants to donate something, you wanna have a meeting?
Yes, so we we would do staff analysis and that whether it's viable, and we were definitely within coma um, Kansas Open Meetings Act and within Kansas statute. Make sure that we had adequate notice of those meetings. Um, but call the board together when we have business. That's a good use of the board's time. Rather than queuing everything up every four weeks, whether or not we have things.
Do we need to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we need to respond to the suspension request prior to?
It'll actually be our next business item, so like right after this one.
I understand. And I think the item that we're discussing says we request the board to approve suspension.
Um, yes, I did include that we have requested that consideration within the analysis kind of as a year of the full year update.
So my question is, does it make sense for us to, if if we have a voice and a vote on the suspension, to see that through such that it's okay for you, because you can't take this to the board, well, you could take this to the board and say, we want to suspend, but the two minutes later, we decide we don't approve the motion to suspend.
Um, if we chose not to suspend, then this would not be included in what we roll forward with the council.
Okay.
So I I put that in the analysis to be comprehensive, but that's a really good point.
I just wondered if there was a operational order that we could go in that would assist you.
Yeah, definitely, we would reflect actual outcomes for this meeting and so forth, just not to, we would not keep this in there or or we would modify at a point.
Question on any report, generally you have budgets and expenses. Um, how is um, your employment, who pays for you on this board? Is this? What budget do we have and what's it costing to have the Wichita Land Bank?
So we have um, community development block grants allows twenty percent of that grant to be spent on administrative costs. And so at this point in time, all the in-bank staff activity is being billed within that twenty percent margin that's allowed. Um, that covers in terms of my own, that covers land bank activities, that covers my home repair program administrative costs. Um, if we have parcels, projects that move forward, the plan and intent is actually that that staff that was invested in that project upfront would actually be re-toed to bill the back to the projects, but we can't go to the projects until we got projects.
So maybe this is a fair question, but I guess it just gets paid through the federal government?
Yeah.
Pays and should we know what expenses, what this costs as board members?
The management of this.
Yeah, I mean, what what is this costing in our government? Is that a fair?
Yeah.
To know, okay, what what's this? I've had people say, well, what's it costing to do the land bank? I don't know. Um, but I think it'd be good to know for talking staff and for all this whole thing.
The the staffing that we currently have, they do other jobs besides the land bank.
Yes.
Oh, sadly, they're they're twenty percent. That's a deal that they, yeah.
There there's some federal dollars that are allocated and twenty percent of whatever time Sarah puts into this. It is. Those dollars are all included in the housing, city's housing department.
So for example, Lance is primarily at this point assigned to the land bank, but he also does work for our home program. Um, I actually am assigned to about six or seven different programs.
Okay.
And so we do bill our costs to staff to the grant specific, so that time is coded accordingly. So the land bank is not carrying costs for any staffing time, and it's not being spent on land bank.
Nobody's a hundred percent dedicated to land bank?
No. No.
We are.
Yeah, we we make a lot of money to export. I know we are selling.
I mean, all kinds of.
As a staff team, Lance is actually your primary staff member. Um, Roger does some, but Roger is primarily dedicated to public housing and the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, I have been getting spread between several. I have been given spread between several different products and grants. And so part of our capacity challenge is that as the Affordable Housing Fund cranks up, we're actually going to have to utilize more of this time and more of my time on that project.
For the record, we actually did not make any money. That was a joke.
Yeah, definitely, our bylaws.
Not giving any of this. That was a joke that we were talking about.
Well, Sarah, it looks like what I would propose we do is basically, I assume we need to vote on the suspension of the regular Wichita Land Bank meetings?
Yes.
And our suspension, do we have, does it say anywhere that we will have an annual meeting and meetings called whenever needed? Or anything that says, here's what the new rules are going to be?
It is not in the proposal, and so I do have that in the slides. We can definitely write that into the proposal.
Feeling is having meetings where we just, you don't have it every month, it's kind of hard to schedule when you. I mean, it's, it's nice to have a dedicated time to know what you're going to do, and this is the day you do it versus.
I think we keep the day the same, but we just may not always have it. And we get notified 30, you know, maybe, maybe we come a week, we, we keep having the meeting scheduled as is, but two weeks before the meeting date.
We don't know if we have.
Sarah will send down a notice later, not we have a meeting.
Yeah, it would be far easier to schedule the meetings, reserve the room, and then.
So let's do it that way and just continue through this year on that basis. So basically, the meetings are all scheduled, but will be canceled two weeks before the day of the meeting, unless there's any items. And then if there's any updated information, that can be sent to us for review.
Yes.
Or to the meetings, and it may even be sent out at different times, and we may not have a meeting.
Yes.
Thought process. I mean, we, you know, we may see an update on some of these projects, but there's nothing we need to act upon, so we do not have a meeting another 45 days or whatever. But at least we have that information.
Would you be most comfortable maybe jumping ahead to the next item, determining how we want to proceed with that proposal and then coming back to the annual report?
I'm fine with the annual report as is, but I think that it needs to clarify exactly what the suspension means.
Definitely.
Now, we'll continue to do the land bank business, but it, it doesn't need to have a meeting every 30 days.
Only if we have business to conduct.
If we, unless we have business to conduct.
And I think that's really at the heart of what we're proposing is we know that you all have busy schedules, we know that you bring a lot of capacity, and we appreciate what the board does. Staff also is stretched thin, and so we want to utilize meeting times as well and make sure that we're bringing, that we're meeting when we have active business to conduct, so.
What, what I'd love to see is for you to amend these documents going to city council to reflect exactly what we've talked about.
And then I can send these back out to the board before we submit them to council.
And I assume we could review and add comments and get back to you?
Yes, it would need to come back directly to me and not share.
Unless it's nothing, we have to really agree as a board, right? Okay. That's what I recommend we do. Everybody?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And I will have these out to you probably by Monday, because I need to submit them, then I think to council by Wednesday next week. Thank you.
Good work.
So again, the land bank was established in 2021. We've talked about really what our primary responsibility is as a board and as an entity. And within those establishing ordinances, council appoints board of trustees for the land bank consisting of seven members with expertise in relevant fields. You as board, your powers and duties include making recommendations to the city council regarding the transfer, sale, or acquisition of real property offered to the land bank. In 2022, the land bank moved, I believe, from planning to being headquartered in housing and community services. And then staff have been working in that time to try to pilot various properties and develop our technical processes of what does it look like to bring properties in through. And we discussed in January three key challenges that have emerged as we have worked to pilot projects. And those include our sole funding sources, community development block grants, and that is a limiting factor to the types of parcels we can take on. I think there was also an anticipation that we could receive properties out of the tax sale if they didn't sell, and we learned quite a bit about the tax sale process since that time. And then also, as we've discussed, staff capacity will become more limited as the Affordable Housing Fund project comes online. And so in January, staff reached out to board members and discussed potentially modifying our regular operations. And this would be for a time and while we continue to work to address these challenges. Our recommendation for that timeline would be spring 2024 through December 31st, 2025. One of the requirements, if we modify operations, is that we do need a timeline on that. And so that is the timeline for the board's proposal. And staff would, in that time, remain responsible for the following, and then in our discussion, we can refine these as well. The vetting and acquisition disposition opportunities, continuing to connect public engagement on behalf of the land bank. We would have administrative activity reports, and I believe I proposed in our text that that would go out to the board at least quarterly. We would continue to communicate out to the board regarding board-directed actions, updates, things like that. We would continue to explore funding opportunities to allow for a greater variety of projects. And we would continue to work on our strategy regarding tax sale acquisitions that could be both strategies locally and strategies through legislative processes and advocacy. And so as I review the bylaws, and Jeff has reviewed this as well, section 3 EA of the bylaws allows the board to suspend its rules. The motion must state the specific purpose and the rules to be suspended, and it has to designate the length of time for the suspension. And then the majority of the members present must agree to any sort of suspension of the rules. And so what we propose is suspension of the following provision of the bylaws through the end of December of 2025, and it's Article Three, Section One, and I do have the bylaws in the board packet as well. And that states that the first meeting of each calendar year, the board shall establish regular meeting times and dates for the upcoming year, and the board shall hold at least nine regular meetings during the year. And so we are looking at potentially not, not necessarily having those regular meeting times and dates, although we can still hold those times and dates on our calendar, and also relieve from the provision of the nine regular meetings per year. And so our recommendation would be to look at at least three meetings per year, along with special meetings or work sessions as needed, and that is subject to refining. So financially, we have an allocation of 377,427 in CDBG funds. Those may be spent across multiple budget years, and provided that timeliness provisions are met, there's no anticipated impact. There's also no impact to the city's general fund, and staff have written a request at two different levels for what we call a program motion that would request general fund operating for future budget years. Those requested amounts were at 25,000, which would ease up and allow some limited operations, and also at 100,000, which we would, we believe would allow us to pilot a greater number and variety of projects. Legal considerations, this has been reviewed by the law department. And our recommended action, and again, this is subject to the board, is to suspend Article Three, Section One of the bylaws for the Wichita Land Bank through December 30th, 2025. And I'm glad to stand for any questions.
But back up and show we're used.
And.
Right there.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
Three, Section One, it just says, here's, we'd have at least nine meetings, staff is regular times.
We're suspending the whole article, we're changing it into Article Three.
We're just suspending that for the next two years, basically.
One of the recommendations was to suspend rather than to modify, because modification is actually a more extensive process, whereas suspension is at the board's discretion for a time and, for a limited time.
I think the key is at least three meetings per year. We just need to make sure we have three meetings.
And as discussed, we can definitely set, continue our regular meeting schedule, but make it subject to cancellation or.
That's my only question. Do you need to put in there what the plan is opposed to saying we're suspending? That's, that's a, I mean, you, you, you guys know how to do that as far as how it should be written for council.
Definitely. And part of why I had put this in the previous item is that council doesn't actually, from, from our writing, read and interpretation, council doesn't necessarily need to also approve a suspension. And that is at the board's level for authorization, but we would definitely roll it forward and report it to council. We don't want council to be unaware of what we're doing.
Need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'd like to have a motion, Freddie.
I move to approve the proposal to suspend regular operations of the Wichita Land Bank.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a second? Second drone. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed, same side?
I think that was a 5-0.
I think it's 5-0.
Thank you very much. And with that, that actually intensifies our commitment to keep the board, to keep communication robust, to keep the board advised and informed. And our next item is regular business, or yeah, other business in open discussion.
Any other items to be discussed?
I want to elevate and say thank you to you and the staff for the revised packet. You noted it earlier. It's obvious to us that you all had put in substantial effort. You, you noted professionalism, and certainly that comes through. And so I just want to demonstrate, elevate our appreciation for the effort that you all put into carrying those materials.
And this is the standard that we want to set moving forward.
Because I have one question for you that you can answer for the next time. What's your biggest obstacle that you have to overcome for you guys to do your job?
And.
You'll have to run it up the top.
I think we've talked about the three staff capacity will alleviate. And we currently have a vacancy within that team. It actually should be a three-member team plus myself. So that hiring, that can alleviate. I would say general fund operating funds are actually probably the most attainable obstacle that would alleviate things. If we had dual funding streams, we could potentially pursue things that were not necessarily CDBG eligible. And so we could pursue a wider variety of properties. We potentially could allow some additional successes and really understand from a pilot basis what our opportunities for success are. I think the tax sale, we could participate. We could buy parcels. We could, we could make things work.
I think also when we, like the apartment property is definitely, that is. That's, that's definitely something that we're after, is those apartments. Key management has more of them. So I can't imagine, we need to reach out to people like that to donate, and I think a good thing would be if possible, is to get some kind of news story, like maybe the paper, or something, something telling us, and maybe management, key management doesn't want to advertise that they donated it, maybe it's going to be public information anyway. But I think it'd be a good avenue to get that out there, to show other people that, hey, we are here and we're accepting donations. Other than something, because some people don't know it exists. I, I told someone I was on the land bank, they said, we consider Wichita as a land bank? I didn't know that. So I think it's, it's one of those things where I think if there was more out there marketed, I think we would maybe get more donations if, if it existed.
It might be interested, interesting to go to, like key management, like Omega, and some of those that manage properties. Yeah, because I would guess Key has known this property has been.
For years.
Sort of.
Sure.
Out on an island by itself.
22 years.
Sure, a number of years.
Sure.
And if the management companies would say, you know, here's one that you ought to go talk to the owners, I'd be able to get some action on that. So that might be something that we do. Sarah is, is engage some of the management companies that have multifamily properties.
Sure.
In large bulk, and I, Omega and Key would be the first two I'd be calling them.
Be proactive, looking for it, so waiting for.
And I think as a kind of personal aside, just living within this project for the last, I've been here almost 17 months. And I think what the land bank was originally envisioned for was really an infill strategy. But what we're finding that we can do with our funding source and our limitations are really the odd and unusual projects. And that's kind of exciting to say, you know, we would love to be able to handle what we were designed to do, but this Market Street potential is an opportunity to preserve a whole of the housing. And we have some potential opportunities. We will be disposing of public housing units, and we have a couple that have had fires and are likely not to dispose easily. And so those potentially could come back through the land bank as potential opportunities to acquire demo and redevelop. And so if nothing else, it's exciting to me to see, I, I would love to have a separation to the land bank, but it's exciting to see that we can handle the things that really otherwise would fall through the cracks, that there's no tool for.
The other thing I'd like us to consider, and it's part of what our mission is, is a lot, in our target area, there's a lot of activity now that we're, I don't know, what Habitat for Humanity and some of those are building a lot of those houses in our general neighborhood where we want to be at. My question is, is on the lots that they can't get clear title to, how do we help on that? Because there's an opportunity for them to do more if they can get clear title. And some of those, you know, it looks like they, you know, they're skipping a lot or two, and I wonder, okay, is that because there's issues with title on those lots? And boy, it sure would be nice if we were building four houses right there instead of two.
Right.
So that's something you might think about, Sarah, is how do you help in that side of it with getting clear title on some of those lots?
And those are definitely the kinds of activities that can and should continue, even as we're not necessarily meeting every four weeks, but that we can report out on our progress. One other that we hadn't shared on today is data, and I have completed entry of all the exhibit Ds. That's my next weekend project right now. We are still working on completion of exhibit As, and so that is still within other staff trying to complete as there's time and capacity, but we are slowly but steadily trying to move that forward.
On this clear title stuff, if you think there's some opportunities, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go talk to some of the title companies in town and see if they could help us with that as a volunteer project. Because that's something they might be willing to do.
One other resource that could be available. I think District One has agreed that they can assist with some title work as well.
It's those kind of things that we need to hear from you, that how can we help you? You know, when your bank coming in a roadblock, try to help you figure out how to get that roadblock out of the way so you can do your job. And so that's what I'm interested to hear this year is.
And I think a few meetings ago, I wanted to tell you thank you for talking through it was with the Market Street property, the idea of having an option, and I think that is a strategy that we can and should pursue for future projects. But this one, we were kind of deep enough in, and there's, it's complex enough that we're not necessarily worried about slipping away from us necessarily, given the complexities. But I really do value the expertise the board brings. Each of you, just from your own sectors and your own worlds, I've learned so much.
Other items for discussion? If not, I move we adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Have a great day. And. Again, when you asked somebody, a couple of weeks ago, you said, oh, I'll be there. I didn't say I've been here for.